She had a variety of leadership roles in the district. She was on the school council and task force that met last year. She was the assistant principal at Joshua Eaton for several years. Was on curriculum committees, on a CAP committee, teacher assessment process. Taught kindergarten, third grade, and first grade during years here. Just an amazing person. The Joshua Eaton staff obviously is in a lot of shock this week. But they're working together to make sure that the classes are on its move, but they take care of each other as well. We have a lot of support over there this week. The students have been amazing. There's been big pieces of paper on bulletin boards that they've had opportunities to write things about Jody on. They've filled it a few times and put up new paper. And some of those papers were actually at the wake this evening.
With butterflies?
Butterflies, yeah, because butterflies was one of Jody's favorite symbols. So it's a tough time right now for the Redding public school.
Later, but since we were talking about this, I just, as a Joshua Eaton parent, I wanted to commend Principal Sprung and the entire staff. I've heard from students, and I've heard from parents, and I've heard from teachers. And what they did together as a community this week was really so well done. Students had a chance to share memories. You talk about the bulletin boards and the things. I just, it's a very, very difficult time. It's a terrible, terrible tragedy. And speaking from all of the different people that I spoke to, everyone felt that they were all included and it was very well done. It was a nice tribute to a wonderful person.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will, doesn't look like we have any public input. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to have removed from consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero. Oh, I'd also like to say that Dr. Nyhan is recovering from surgery. They went well. And, you know, we expect to have him back here probably a couple of weeks or so. So he said right after Martin Luther King Day.
Right, that's great.
So we wish him well and the speed of recovery. Next, we would have the reports. And student committee reports.
Human Relations Advisory Committee is going on as we speak at the town, at the police station. The Martin Luther King Day event is on Monday, January 18th, from 9:30 to 11:30. Please come. Breakfast is free. And organizations, school and local organizations will be talking about how they're taking care of others as Martin Luther King charged us to do. And there'll be lots of community and school involvement in this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. I had asked if I could just take a few minutes to read a few highlights from the article that was in the Globe on Wednesday, which was actually front page about the full social emotional growth high on the curriculum. So I really was, I want to thank, really, thanks goes to our whole community, but specifically to the schools. Dr. Doherty, Sarah Byrd, our superintendent, they're really all administrators. So I don't know if people, I actually had an opportunity to read it in print. But across Massachusetts, schools are devoting more time to address social emotional well being of their students. Educators stress the movement is not simply a feel-good education. They say teaching students at every grade to manage their emotions can help them deal with a multitude of serious illnesses, including bullying, mental illness, substance abuse, or trauma. This is sort of right in line with what we just talked about. So Reading is a town of 25,000 north of Boston, has emerged as a state leader over the past few years in what is, what is known as social emotional learning. The town stands apart because it has devised an aggressive plan to reach out to students before signs of problems arise. And its initiatives go well beyond the school doors. So I'm just reading certain episodes. These don't all flow together. And a quote from Sarah Byrd was that you treat every child as if they need a safe and supportive environment. And that every child, you don't know which children need that because they don't wear a name tag. So you really have to make it an environment for every child. Educators stress it's challenging undertaking because it's not always clear which students are experiencing distress. Some may signal that they're struggling by acting out in class or bursting into tears, but others can appear well adjusted. In one noteworthy endeavor, the town, Reading, is training more than 350 educators, town librarians, clergy, crossing guards, bus drivers, and police to be youth mental health first aid responders, instilling them with the skills to identify students who might be in trouble and know how to respond. While with, with Reading ranking almost at the bottom in the state for per student spending, the town has relied on three federal grants totaling about $2 million to help support our social and emotional programs in school and its community-wide efforts to combat substance abuse among residents of all ages. I just want to add, you know, we know that there are a lot of people who work really, really hard to get those grants. And that's, you know, across our community, the police, RACSA, the schools. So that's really important piece of it because clearly we would definitely not be able to do that. The community dialogue was a natural outgrowth of an effort that the town began a decade ago. And I think many of us were involved in some of those World Cafe type conversations. The Race to Nowhere, a lot of the things that we've done in the community. School officials also undertook a review at that time and concluded the district lacked a comprehensive approach to fostering social and emotional well-being. So the findings prompted the school officials to do an overhaul. And the overhaul appears to be paying off. In a report this fall, the Rennie Center and Education Research and Policy Organization of Boston highlighted Reading, along with Ball River and Gardner, as glowing examples of their work in student behavioral health, specifically because they made it a community effort rather than just a school initiative. So I think this is just a great, great article. And this is part of a series of articles that the Globe is doing all year around education. So probably something to look for in Wednesday's papers. But I just really wanted to take a minute to highlight a few things. The article's long, I recommend reading the whole thing. And really just want to thank the administration and staff for their leadership and really the leadership in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Doherty just passed around the, that's the full article. Carol, did you have?
Just two things. We have two special ed, parent advisory council meetings, full meetings. On January 12th, we have our basic rights presentation. So we have someone coming from Mass Advocates for Children to do a basic rights presentation for the parents. And on January 28th, we have a meeting where I'll be going over our new transition process for students moving from different levels. So preschool to kindergarten, elementary to middle, and middle to high school. And how we're going to work to transition our special education students and families. So those are those two meetings. And then the post-program, they are officially moving in on Monday. So they've been doing transition this week out of our space here. And will be in their space in Wakefield on Monday. And if any of you are interested in going for a final tour, because I haven't yet seen the space, I'm happy to, you know, coordinate something. So, but yes, I believe Monday will be the day.
Dr. Doherty?
I know we're not talking about budget tonight, but we, we've sent out several notices to the community about upcoming budget meetings. And we sent another one out today and anticipated if anyone thought that we were going to be talking about budget tonight. So we will be starting the budget presentations to the school committee on Monday night. On Tuesday and Wednesday night, we're going to do a presentation for the actual entire school community. We're going to have babysitting service provided if parents want to bring the children. We'll have, we'll have kids babysitting if they need to. But we'll be doing the same presentation two nights in a row. Gives people the opportunity to see both. Tuesday night is at 6:30 at Coolidge, and Wednesday night is at 6:30 at Parker. And there'll be the same presentation.
Which will be the one we see Monday?
That you see on Monday night, correct. The Board of Selectmen are also starting their budget discussions. And I had sent that out to you on, it's the next two Tuesdays. And I know the town manager has encouraged the Board of Selectmen to come to the school committee meetings. And so if, if people want to go to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I know the facilities budget will be discussed on Tuesday night. And that will involve schools, so.
Tuesday, the 12th?
This, this Tuesday, the 12th, yes.
And then also the 19th?
And the 19th is the rest of the budget areas.
And those are also at the senior center, not at the town hall?
They're at the senior center, thank you, yes.
And the new chief will be pinned also on Tuesday?
On Tuesday night, correct.
Tuesday night, right. Got to go to that.
That's it? Okay.
Now we can do the Parker Middle School search, principal?
Yes. So in your packet is the timeline and the, or the search and the composition of the search committee. Search committee is, is pretty much been put together now. Applications are coming in. We have, I believe, 20 applications right now. And the deadline is the 22nd. So the screening committee will start meeting next week to design questions, to start reviewing the applications to, and they'll be conducting interviews in early February. The goal is to, once the pre-finalists are chosen, and then I'll have interviews with the pre-finalists and then move forward the finalists, which will then become public. We will then have open microphone sessions and site visits to Parker. And potentially site visits to those, to the schools, their schools. Which we sometimes do, we sometimes don't do, depending on the situation. The goal is to have a Parker Middle School principal appointed by March, in March. Which for, for a July 1 start.
Do you have a motion? I do. Move to approve the Parker principal, principal search process and timeline as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
It's a very brief question. Before I served on the school committee, I was a parent representative on a different search process. And I found it to be, just, it's hard to know because there's anonymity, so, to protect the candidates. So you can't really talk about it afterwards. So there's sort of like, how does it go? And I just wanted to say, I think it's a phenomenal process. It's very inclusive, it's very open, people are very honest, there's a lot of good discussion. And in, in sort of talking with other school committees across the state, this really is a model. This is how it should be done. So I, I'm very proud of this process, and I think it's yielded good results. So kudos to Dr. Doherty and his staff for developing this. Really, I do think it should be the model for the state.
Good, yes.
See a question? I also have been a part of this process and have felt the strength of it. I really think it's an important process that takes extra effort, but is worth every minute of it, of all of the people's time. I see that it's been listed in the Boston Globe, School Spring, Mass, MASP, Monster. I know we've discussed in the past trying to reach out to draw in a diverse candidate pool. Can you tell me, I'm not really well-versed in these, is this, will this draw in people from different cultures and different, I mean, a diverse candidate?
Yes. Well, School Spring, School Spring and Monster, definitely, it will, it will go out to a diverse pool of candidates. We also, I believe also Michelle LaSanda's reached out to universities as well. So it, it does, it does reach out to a diverse pool.
Thank you.
I have one question. So in terms of the timing of the transition, is there, would there be any planned overlap between the current principal and the new principal?
So having it appointed in March gives you the flexibility to allow that person to come in a couple of days here and there during the school year. So that they, they can start transitioning. It doesn't mean that they would be starting
Right, right.
At that time. It's a July 1 start. But they would, they would have the ability to come in and see how the end of the school year runs and...
Right, and our current principal is a June 30th contract?
Yeah, yep. She's there till June 30th.
Okay, so there's no, wouldn't be necessarily any plan to like extend that at any point in time? But hopefully leverage some of that time?
If it's, if it's necessary, we can, but I don't think it'll be necessary as, as long as we're able to appoint someone in March.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's all likelihood that person will have another job until June 30th.
Right, but we, we've worked it out with other school districts. I'll, I'll talk to the superintendent and say, you know, can we have? And, and sometimes what happens is we, we trade days. So we may need them to come in a few days before they start. And they may need to stay a few days in their school district after they start. So there's a trading of days that happens to allow for the transition, on both ends. Because they're transitioning out of their school district as well.
Thank you.
Ready for the vote? All of you in favor? Five zero. Okay, appointment to collaboratives?
Mr. Chair, move to appoint Superintendent John F. Doherty as the Reading Public Schools representative to the Board of Directors of the North Shore Education Consortium for the 2015-16 school year.
Is there a second? Did you have a?
This is an annual appointment by statute that the school committee needs to take a vote on.
Right. Any other questions, discussion? All is in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to appoint Superintendent John F. Doherty as the Reading Public Schools representative to the Board of Directors of the SEEM Collaborative for the 2015-16 school year.
Second? Any discussion? None? Ready for the vote? Five zero. Okay. Ready for the budget transfer discussion?
Sure. So we're, we're midway through the year. And we've, we've had some hiccups in a couple of our cost centers that we didn't budget for. The first one that I'll talk us through is the technology cost center. We had a number of things that we have to, we have to fund. There was a staff turnover, and during that time, we contracted with a consultant to help keep the system up and running. And keep our infrastructure and our networks and other things up and running. We had to buy out that, the person that left their vacation. And the, the candidate that we selected to replace him came in at a slightly higher salary, annual salary. So at this point in the year, we're, we're under, we're in a deficit situation of just under $40,000. I'd like to give us a little bit of wiggle room for the rest of the year. So I'm requesting a transfer of $45,000 from the regular education cost center. We do have some salary savings from turnover in regular ed that we're going to use to, to fund this and the second cost, the second transfer that we're requesting. I don't know, I'll stop if you have any questions about the first technology.
Does the FY '17 budget that we're going to start looking at next week, next week, account for these increases?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
It does, thank you for the question. Any others? The second transfer is to the administration cost center. We have, we're covering a leave of absence for a staff person that had a, had a child. And so we need to cover that absence as it's a critical position. And it wasn't one that could be absorbed by existing staff. And that, that's the most significant part of that one. The other portion there is we're, we're slightly ahead of budget when it comes to employee physicals, where we are at this point in the year. And I think that's a direct result of the, the large turnover that we had last year. Those, the people that we were onboarding hit this year's fiscal budget. So, so we're a little bit, at, at this point in the year, we've used all of our physical money, which I know we're going to have more hires between now and the end of the year. So at this point, we're about $18,000 in the deficit in the administrative cost center. So I'm requesting a $20,000 transfer, again, from the regular ed cost center to, to bring that one into, into balance.
Yes.
Question, I guess I probably should know this because it's been so long, but, so we, we have to pay the cost of physicals for employees as they start?
Yes. The Board of Selectmen, it's, it's a requirement that, that we have a physical, a preplacement physical.
It's a town of Reading requirement.
A town of Reading requirement. So even if they've like just had an annual physical at their doctors, you can't get the, you don't take that, you make them see some other doctor? Sorry.
No, I apologize. The town of Reading has contracted with Quadrant. And that's where we do all of our preplacement physicals. If there's anyone who's injured on the job, they go to Quadrant to be looked at. If there's a work or injury.
There's also, there's also screening as well. That goes along with it.
Okay, okay. And we pay for that?
Yes.
Yes.
I feel, I, how, how is the, I'm assuming that whatever the results of a physical are confidential. I feel funny asking this question.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So it's just for the employees' benefit that there is this physical and a baseline so that if down the road something?
It's good risk management.
Yes, exactly. The confidential results are provided to our HR administrator. And, and determinations are made if, if anything is, anything a positive, you know?
Yeah, we also, when we get the screening results too.
Yeah. And our offer letters are contingent upon successful, physical, preplacement physical, if you will.
Yeah, I got, in, I mean, some of my workplaces, you, people just have to go to their own doctors and get certain, you know, they go, we, they give them a slip and you get the testing. But this is, gives you a different level of control. I understand why the town wants to do it. I just was not familiar with it. So I don't know what they cost per person, but they're probably a few hundred bucks, I'm assuming.
It, it, it has an impact on our health insurance, you know, with Maya.
My guess is we do get a discount because we do this.
Yeah, so this is good policy, good business.
Great.
Can I just ask? I, I'm really new to this piece. So if something were discovered, then what would then be the step of the school commit, the, the schools, the HR and the prospective employee?
Do you want me to speak to that, or do you want to?
So, I mean, there are some, there are some things that whatever is discovered is, is in, affect their employment here. There are other things that, that could be. So for, and, and I'll just give you an example. If someone fails the alcohol and drug test, and they're working with kids, then we have to think about, do, is that a person that we would want in the school district? And we, we do have the right to deny them based on that.
Because that's in the contract that they sign when they say they're going to do this, they're going to get that physical or?
It says it's based, their, their hiring is contingent upon the pre-employment physical and screenings.
That's pretty, right, I think that's all pretty standard. I just, I think the fact that the municipality pays for it is a little different than maybe some private industries. But I can understand that it gives us a better brick position with the, the insurance raiders. And it's a good protective. Thank you.
Do you have a discussion?
Just, just to reconfirm these, so these costs and the transfers, the money is there because of staff turnover? So we're not looking for additional funds?
Correct. It's a, it's a reallocation. I, the way the budget is approved by the school committee, we, we have the purview to move things within a cost center. But I can't move savings between cost centers without the school committee's approval, so.
Do we read the, read the motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Move to authorize the transfer of $45,000 from the regular education cost center to the technology cost center. Can we do this all in one? And move to authorize the transfer of $20,000 from the regular education cost center to the administration cost center.
Second.
Other discussion? All is in favor? Five zero. Dr. Doherty, did you want to do your goals?
Sure. So in your packet, you see the, well, there's, there's a couple of things in the, in the, what I want to share with you, actually, is this in here?
Yeah.
In the back.
What's that?
In the back.
Yeah, but the goal's on in here.
Superintendent Golds?
Goal's on in here. But I can talk about the district planning process while we're waiting. So the goals, the actual goals have not changed since last year. But what has changed is the process that we used to create the actual action planning. And we actually came across this, this process a year ago at the MASC, MASs conference, that the DESI was, was piloting this new process in some, some school districts. The Planning for Success process. So as a, as a district leadership team, we embarked on this process this past year and came up with a series of six action plans for the five goals. And so the five goals, if you remember, one is teaching and learning, one is building the professional capacity, one is the social emotional learning of students, one is resources and space, and one is communication. So we developed individual action plans for those. We took the teaching and learning one and actually split it into three. So we have one for curriculum assessment and instruction, because we felt that just having one goal on that was too overwhelming. So what the action planning does, and I think it was in the December packet, it's not in this one, but it was in the December packet, is it creates specific steps for the year, and maybe a little bit beyond the year, on what are the action steps that you're taking, who is responsible for that? And then the early benchmarks of success, how do you know it's working? And that's what's captured in, in each of the action plans. In this past November at the MASC, MASs conference, we had the opportunity, along with several other school districts, to present at the conference on this process. And in the packet, I know this is in the packet, there is, the Reading story is, is in here. Looks like it's, let's mark this page 24. So they have a whole case study on us, which is on the, the DESI website, in the process that we used as we went through creating the, the separate action plans for each of the, the five goals. So that, that's in here, and as you can see. I apologize that it's, the action plans aren't in the packet. But I think, I think it was in the December one that you received.
Did anyone have any questions?
So can I just ask, so who participated in this process that the case study was written on?
So the way that we did it is we went through a series of trainings. The, the district leadership team went through a series of trainings with a facilitator from the Department of Education And then this past summer, we spent a lot of ti, we actually took a, a stop in March because we wanted, we wanted to do it right, so we wanted the summer, since it's less hectic?
Yeah.
A summer, the summer to reflect on it and really come up with some really strong action steps. So at the beginning of the summer, we developed the action plans and then in August, we brought everyone back together and included assistant principals, team chairs, central office administrators, principals as part of that to refine in the, um, the action plans.
I saw your, uh, comment here that you thought one of the things that helped that be effective was to have the external facilitator.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the external facilitator allowed myself to participate, um, and other central office administrators to be part of the, the conversations. Whereas if one of us was facilitating it, that wouldn't have been as easy to do.
No, I think that's a good, really good point.
You have a question?
Yes.
Sorry, no, I'm not asking questions.
I, I believe she's running the law.
Yeah, she is.
So I apologize for that.
Oh, yeah, you should.
There it is. Sorry.
Yeah, I think this was in the...
It was in the December.
Last meeting, yes.
Is that the same as what was in last, the twenty first?
Yeah, that hasn't changed. What we'll be doing, um, once the budget season is over with the district leadership team, is we'll be going and refining each of these action steps to make sure we're still on target. So let me, I'll quickly now go through it. So the, the first page is the one-page snapshot of our, our vision, our theory of action, our questions that we ask, the five goals and the progress of the, um, the sub-goals underneath. And then when you look at, um, the chart on page three, you see the district goal, the action plans that are aligned with that goal, and then the strategic objectives that are aligned to those action plans and district goal. And then when, on page, starting on page four, you have the district goal, so, um, goal number one, student learning, the first action plan is curriculum, and then you see all of these different process benchmarks, things that are going to be happening, the person responsible, the date, and then the status of each of these. So in mid-January, we'll start going through this with the DLT, the District Leadership Team, and review and revise if we need to each of these action, um, action plans. So it's a, we felt there was a much cleaner way, in a much more focused way, that's what we found as we were doing the process, that we were much more focused than the old system that we were using. The other thing is, is that the, the principals are using this template for their school improvement plans also.
Yes.
Just wanted to comment, John, I really like the way that this is all broken down. I was just having this discussion at Parker about the school improvement plans and I think it's very difficult to, to, um, really track the specific progress by breaking it down, you know, with all of these individual categories. I think it's a great way to show what the progress that's been made, you know, the specific examples as opposed to just a general blanket statement. This shows what's been done specifically and I think this is very well done, very well thought of.
Yes.
I have a question. I agree with that completely, actually. Everything that Mrs. Joyce just said, I like how it's laid out and I like the accountability piece and I like the dates. A question I'm having as I'm flipping through it is the measurement. So how do you know? I'm seeing a lot of inputs, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. So I'm looking under the sections, early evidence of change benchmark.
Right.
Is that where I should be looking?
That's some of your measurements. And then if you go in the back, the back page, so the back page are more of the common measures and it's going to look a little bit different for each school based on where they are at with their goals, um, in their school improvement plans and in the district. So these are the thirteen areas that we're looking at as common measures, not everyone is doing all thirteen. So principals, depending on their school, they'll have some of these thirteen, depending on the goals they're focused on. The district leader of social emotional learning, Sarah Bird, the team chairs have certain common measures that they're focused on, and then central office has, has other ones. So this is what we're, those are the measures I think you're talking about.
So if you go to page, I'm sorry, you...
Can I ask a quick clarifying question, Mr. Chair? Thank you. So this replaces then the process we went through last fall where we came up with a very similar, I think they were called superintendent's goals at that time?
This is your district action plan?
Okay.
Which, these are essentially the superintendent's goals. So the superintendent's goals come from the di, district action plan?
Okay.
Yes?
Thank you, thank you.
So if you go to page five, it may just be a housekeeping thing, but we should probably have where Doug Lyons is listed as a person responsible, we should probably, uh, there must be someone who taken that.
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying, yes, yep.
With like, for instance, with Heather Leonard.
Thank you.
So is Heather Leonard doing his role?
She's doing, was doing it with him.
Yeah, she does work. So it's, it's, right now it's Jane.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's Jane. And those are the changes that we're going to, in mid-January when we review it.
Any other questions?
And you'll see these also on Monday, not all of this, but you'll see these on Monday night because really this is how you develop your budget, is you want to link it to the goals.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a, or you?
No, I was just scratching my head.
Okay, now we'll have the second, second reading of, uh, policy BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings.
Should I start reading?
Yes.
Okay. Policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. School committee meetings, including executive sessions, are conducted in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. School committee desires...
And I, um, move that we discuss with the reading for now since it's in the packet?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor and defense the reading?
Uh, Mr. Chair, move to accept the second reading and approve and revise policy BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings.
Is there a second? Yeah, second, and then we can have a discussion.
A second.
Okay, I just, uh, just before we start, uh, I, we got some emails on this and I guess just some comment on that. I mean, we've always had a policy on this and at least speaking for myself, uh, I would never, uh, put the gavel down and tell someone they only had three minutes to speak or whatever to speak and let people speak. And, and certainly if a topic is, uh, you know, going on longer than the fifteen minutes and there's still some, some valid discussion to have, I'm all for continuing that. I think this just sets a guideline really to set the agenda for the evening. It doesn't, it's not, it can always be flexible at that, any given point in time and I'm, you know, hoping that any committee that's sitting here down the road would feel the same way. There's certainly no intention to, uh, stop people from voicing their opinions or, uh, or other comments they have. One of the other comments that came out was that, uh, there, there is potentially a concern with people that are residents that can't speak to a, a matter that's later in the evening during the public input section. I guess, you know, I'd be flexible in that too if someone came up and said, I can't be here for such and such, but I'd like to speak to it. Now, I'm, I'm perfectly, perfectly fine with that. I don't need, don't think that that needs to be written into the policy though. I think it's just a matter of, uh, a good way of treating people and how you run a meeting. So that's, I guess, my comment on the, on the email. Did you, yeah?
I, I was just going to say, one of the other concerns was that if people came, like you mentioned, they might not be able to stay the whole time, but if they are able to, the goal of streamlining the meeting so that if someone has a comment on something that is going to be on the agenda, it behooves the understanding of the issue and the discussion if they speak on that at the time that it's being considered by the school committee, as opposed to being stated at the beginning of the meeting disjoint from when the discussion happens. And that was the goal, is just to integrate the discussion if there's an issue that's already on the agenda, to integrate that. And it was pointed out also that in terms of people's expectations, if they come at a time to our meeting, we had talked during our district governance meetings that we wanted to have our meetings more predictable. If we've said that that discussion is going to happen at a certain time in the meeting, then it's important that people can expect that's when it's going to happen. Another one of the comments was, um, that we read in our emails was about interruptions for executive session. And our goal with this policy was to set up the expect, expectation that we would follow our agenda, but sometimes there are times when we're paying a consultant for executive session or something when we need to interrupt. But I'd like to just, I guess, my opinion is that we would try to respect the time of the public that comes here and try at all, if at all possible, to plan our consultants around the public input time so that we don't keep people waiting.
So that executive session is either at the beginning or the end of the meeting and not in the, and that, that's, that has happened, but it's, it's been rare. But I, I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
I, I guess I just want to say, I mean, this is, um, it's going on like thirteen years on the committee, so or probably you, but the, we've always had a public input and at various times had informational things available to people on the, on what the protocol is. And the whole idea behind this is just to give people an opportunity to understand how they can interact with us in a productive way and to just set some guidelines for how we're going to be respectful to people. I think over all the years that I've been on the committee, I, I think, you know, we've done our best to be respectful. There've been, I, I think, a couple of times in the last year where we have had, you know, an executive session, maybe that's sort of been in the middle due to, due to timing. We have to bring other people in, the town manager or whomever, and, you know, so we, we have to, to do that. Generally, we try to, those are planned on the agenda, um, in advance of the meeting. So, uh, you know, hopefully people will see this as an opportunity to just provide a way for us to be respectful of the community and invite them in, so.
Yes.
The other question, thank you. The other question that was raised was about when the agenda booklets are available. And they're available to the best of the office's ability. The agenda for the meeting is published, the required two days in advance, but all the supplemental information, um, isn't always available to be given out at the same time. And although, um, all of us would love as much time as we can have, um, it's not always possible to get that information out as early as ideal, as is ideal. But I just wanted to say, I think it's awesome that people are looking and interested and becoming educated and involved and I think that's a really great thing. So that was also what our policy wanted to indicate, is that we invite people to be involved and we want it to be predictable that way so people know what to expect. And there will be a brochure coming and a booklet coming, but they're not done yet.
I agree. Yes.
I think that also to, it's important to, to reiterate that the policy hasn't changed. This, we've always had this policy and town meeting follows the same policy where there's discussion with the town meeting members, with the, the school committee members, and then the general public is invited and, and absolutely welcome. And I would like to say, the more the merrier. I'd like to see more people here and I'd like to see more discussion and input. And, and I, I do feel that, you know, we do our, our very best to make people feel welcome and, and to have their voices heard, but we're, we're just, we're not changing the policy that's been in place for years.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, another question that was asked about where you can find these policies to make, to become aware, and they're on the school committee page? Um, on the right-hand side, so you can see what the current policies are. And at our different distance, district governance meetings, we also, um, decided that we wanted to be going, renewed our pledge to go through these policies over time so that we would all be, because people are newly elected, so we'd all be aware of what our policies are and on the same page, along with the public. And, um, in terms of the public, one of our goals is so that people can be informed. RCTV, thank you very much, RCTV, for the time and effort you put into taping our meetings so that people can find our meetings and also come up to speed even if they can't make it to us. So we encourage people to share that information and to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, one more thing, since we're all diving in, um, a, a question that I heard, this raised some interesting discussion in the community was, well, what if I can't go to a school committee meeting, I can't get a babysitter, I'm busy that night? And, um, public comment is one of many ways that people can talk to this committee, it's one way. Office hours is another if they want, you know, something a little bit more, um, private and smaller. And, um, email is a very easy way. If you email all members of the school committee, you can, you can very carefully craft your input and we get it. So that's, there are multiple channels through which to communicate with us and, um, and I share everyone's agreement that it's vital that we, that we strive to get as much input from the community to make the best decisions we can.
And if someone wants to send that email and says that they want to read it, public input, we can do that as well.
Absolutely, yep.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify the expectation to the policy of the school committee is that when we do get a group email or when anyone gets an email, that we share that with the chair and with the superintendent so that the chair can reply. So when we get our emails, we can do research, we can think about it, and we can, um, communicate with the chair. And the chair will probably be, well, by policy, the chair will be the one that replies to those emails, just so people understand what the procedure is.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, second reading. Five zero. Do we have minutes?
There was a consent agenda there.
Consent agenda.
That's so extreme.
I love that.
Is there any, uh, any other business that anyone would like to bring up?
Move to adjourn.
Serve a second.
Second.
All those in favor, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
See everybody Monday night.
Monday night.